All right then, are we ready to open the... Well, we had some discussions over the closed meeting preceding the regular meeting of Town Council, but no decisions were taken. So we're going to have a motion to call the closed meeting at an end. I move that the closed meeting be closed, basically, that we turn back to the regular meeting of council. Fine, moved by Mr. Zant and seconded by... Well, fine, fine. Let's go on to announcements, announcements. Mr. Mayor, I must tell you that I received a notice to thank the municipality to... Well, this plaque to thank the municipality to thank us for our involvement with the spelling bee contest. I attended the third edition of the spelling bee contest that was hosted by the Public Library here in Clarence. Now, there will be a championship runoff in 2019, and this program, this spelling bee, of course, is a school board-wide for ages from six to 14 years of age. That gives students the opportunity to further their comprehension of the French language as well as their comprehension of writing, reading, and general understanding of the French language. And we can hand over electronic list of the 400 words that will be employed in the spelling bee. There's an electronic copy, and children can learn through a game, basically. They can play, they can hone their aptitude with regards to spelling bees, and they can practice by themselves. And there's a version, there's a dictionary version also that was supplied by the La Russre company that's handed out to individual children, that's really good. And over and above developing, for example, the general learning of the French language. It allows people to develop their social skills. Three youngsters lived through that experience last year and a couple of years before then, and they drew a lot of great life lessons and experiences, and they stated so. It built their self-confidence, their self-esteem, their confidence in public, and to manage stress, because it's not easy for these youngsters to take part in such a stress-related event. And also honing their interpersonal skills with other children and their sense of undertaking. And it also promotes memory as well as stress management. And Spelling Bee Canada encourages those youngsters at their 15 years of age and even over. Those who are strong in the French language are good in motivating youngsters. And if you'd like to volunteer your time and have these youngsters practice in between the ages of six to 14 years of age, the youngsters will ensure the survival of the francophone language, of course, by becoming bilingual citizens in good standing, both French and English. They'll reinforce our Canadian social structure. So I'd like to thank all of the youngsters of taking part in the spelling bee opportunities and also the teachers of encouraging those youngsters in taking part in the spelling bee competition. So it's a really worthwhile experience to live through. That's it, Mrs. Juanié, that's all you had to say? Well, fine then, thank you. Any other announcements? Councilor Le Lande? I believe that individual members of council received an email concerning the spaghetti and bean supper that will be held for the benefit of Cavenard, who is a youngster who is stricken with cancer here. If those who wish to obtain tickets for the event, you can join Suzanne at 613-298-1990 or Robert at 613-315-7044. And that's to benefit this youngster who's stricken with cancer, this young hockey player that's very well-known in the area. And all proceeds will go to Gavin Shaw to help him in his fight with cancer. Don't forget also that this coming Sunday is Remembrance Day, November 11th, an important day. People gave their lives to ensure that Canada has a bright future. It's going to start off at 11 o'clock at the Knights of Columbus Hall, and an hour later, there will be ceremonies conducted at the Town Hall. Everyone is welcome, of course. Thank you. All right then, let's go on to question period. If anyone has any questions, step up front of the mic, give us your name and your address, and after that, the floor is yours. Good morning, ma'am, or good evening, should I say. My name is Suzanne Perron, Mr. Mayor, addressing the property at 694 Jourbisso, dealing with the item 6B of your agenda. We took possession of the house today or this year. There were some solar panels on the property. We were not kept aware of the developments concerning solar panels that are on the township's property. At this point in time, we're asking a three-month extension to conduct our own research and for arrangements to be made with the city of Clarence and Rockland. You're working along these lines with Marieve? Yes, exactly. Well, fine, that's fine. Thank you, that's it. Thank you, ma'am, thank you for letting us know what's going on. Anyone else? What's your name? Roland Labontey. Yes, Mr. Labontey. I'm here again for my daughter's ditch. Are you going to wait for the water to seep into her basement to clean up her weeping tile pipe full of water? Are we going to wait until next spring? It's full of sand? Well, I think the project is considered as being over and done with. Well, they've said that for a long time, and I went by there, and it looks very nice. Well, it looks very nice? Well, we'll know this coming spring. Next, last year, the floor down in the basement was all wet. You know you came to see it out south there, it was full of sand. I can't give you any answers. Tonight, Mr. Labontey, the director's not here. I don't wait, I'm not waiting for an answer on your part. I just want to know if you're going to go by and check the weeping tile installation to make sure that it's not full of sand. Well, we can ask the department, folks, as when Julien comes back, if there's something can be done. As soon as the director comes back there, Mr. Campou and myself will try and ask him. Well, don't forget now, and phone. We've already phoned you in the past, Mr. Labontey, and you did... We'd set up a big meeting, do you recall? Yeah, with your engineer. Sure, sure, I remember that. But that's not the engineer that sent me a plan. It's not the same one that was there on that day. I can bring you that plan, and I can... You'll see, that's not what was done. I'm totally in agreement with you as to what was done, Mr. Labontey. So it doesn't... I'm going to lose my time to see an engineer that's not the same one that drafted the plan. So he's off, you know, playing a golf course there to raise money for a cause or another. I know how the system works. I just want to know what's going to happen if water seeps into the basement. I'm going to hold you all responsible. You're the ones that voted for having this done. Thank you, thank you. I'm going to remember that now. I voted too. No problem, sir. Other questions, folks? Any other questions? We're still into question period? Yes? Yes, this is the regular meeting of council. In you of the committee of the hall meeting, I can address council? Fine. Well, my name is Monique Alaram. I represent Mrs. Yvette Hatt concerning item 9.2 of page 25 of the Committee of the Hall Minutes concerning the property located at 2164 Landry Road. I'm asking the committee, well, the committee of the hall, well, actually, the people sitting at the regular meeting of Town Council to reject the modification of the zoning bylaw, the R6, to reduce from 109 to 60 meters. And it goes against three recommendations stemming from three governmental levels. It was against the United Counties that recommended against not proceeding with the federal severance that is now proposed and not to reduce. Well, because there was a DMS imposed on the property, it goes against your professional urban planners of the Clarence-Rockland Township that does not recommend any reduction, and it goes against the provincial requirements. I spoke with the land planner, the interpretation. The answer given to me was that the reduction does not apply in this particular case because there's sufficient amount of space available to have a house built on the 109 meters available and even more. So I'm asking that the provincial bylaw be respected and to apply and to make use of the tools that you now have at your disposal, DMS 1 and DMS 2, to properly manage the city of Clarence and Rockland in a legal and fair and equitable way for everyone and to protect agricultural installations. And I'm asking also to ensure that exceptions in Clarence and Rockland do not become the rule and that the rules that are in place be implemented. If I understood things properly, the land planning committee... Well, the only justification that was given to us that I was able to understand during their meeting was that they agreed upon the reduction to avoid the future owner any additional fees. Well, don't forget that there's already a pre-existing house within the 60 meter. Why put in a 69 meter when there's already 60 meter house there? Well, because you transfer the burden of the DMS to constraints. If we want to build another agricultural establishment, we have to keep to the 69 DMS reduction meter. Whereas if one individual can object to our request to reduce the DMS proportions, then we're constrained by that. If you agree with it, there might be... I'm not saying that they're opposing, or if they sell their own homes, future purchasers might oppose themselves to this. So this entails fees to us. You transfer the fees to us, the burden of the DMS 2 upon us, and possibly other additional fees to others if we have to have recourse to the courts to decide upon this question. The bylaw does exist. I'm asking you to apply the provisions of the existing bylaw to our situation. That's all I had to say. Thank you, madam. Any other questions? Fine then, let's go on. Thank you for your point, though. Let's go on now to council members' items. Mrs. Juanié? Whereas the speed limit has been legislated at 50 kilometers an hour everywhere along Clarence and Rockland, bit resolved to determine what legislation caps the speed limit at 50 kilometers an hour and be resolved that the city compares the speed limit of 50 kilometers an hour with other municipalities within Prescott Russell with regards to rural areas. Seconded by Councilor Gudimau. Any questions? All those in favor then, carried. Thank you. Let's go on now to consent items. Are there any items you'd like to withdraw? Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 10.3B and 10.3C. Fine, Councilor Levert. Yes, Councilor Le Lande? I'd just like to update my system. But there's also item 12.2 that I would like to withdraw. Well, we're not there yet. That would be under bylaws. We're under consent items right now. Fine. All right, go ahead, Councilor Levert. Councilor Levert? All right, so we did remove the 10.3 sub-B and 10.3 sub-C, did we not? Yes, we removed them for further discussion. Yes, all right, Mr. Mayor. Be resolved that the further items identified under consent items appearing on the agenda of the regular meeting of the 5th of November be adopted. 10.1, adoption of the minutes of the following meetings, regular meeting of October 10th, 2018, as well as minutes of the Committee of the Hall of October 10th, 2018. Item 10.2, receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. A, Public Transit Advisory Committee, held on April 19th, 2018. Also, meeting of the Library Board, August 18th, 2018. C, Committee of Adjustment Meeting of September 19th, 2018. And D, Planning Committee, September 5th, 2018. And 10.3, the following recommendations from the Committee of the Hall of October 10th, 2018. Sub-A, resolution to increase the contribution to the fleet reserve. And 10.4, resolution to adopt the salaries paid from September 9th, 2018 to October 6th, 2018 in the gross amount of $821,613.68 and net amount of $592,658.33, seconded by Councilor Sima. All those in favor, carried then, thank you. Councilor Le Lande? Item 10.3 sub... Yes, whereas the Committee of the Hall received a copy of the 1063 Jourbisso concerning solar panels on the municipal property. And whereas during the course of this meeting, the Committee of the Hall mandated the administration to prepare a notice reflecting the legal advice received by the city to counter the solution that was proposed by Mr. Taifat. And whereas the advice from the legal council and the insurers shows that the agreement of the owner needs to contain a number of criteria, some of which can be difficult to honor in light of the existing situation, be resolved that Town Council requests that the solar panels belonging to the 464 Jourbisso's owner be withdrawn from the town's property as recommended in Report OMA-18-R. That's the one that Mrs. Perron has alluded to. She's asking for a three-month extension before voting on this. Well, that's the reason that I withdrawn this, Mr. Mayor. After having read the documentation, I'm just wondering if we'd come into an agreement with them, really. And I took a look at the property. I didn't even know that we owned land on Jourbisso. Could it not be a way of sending him a part of that? Well, we're in negotiation as to that right now, and Marieve and I and others had a meeting with regards to that. And that's why I'm asking for a three-month extension to have matters settled in between these parties and the city of Clarence and Rockland. So I move that we defer that. Yes, and defer a decision in the next three months from now. Yes, negotiations will be entered into, and resolutions will be brought back to council for further deliberations then. Do I need someone to second? I move that we defer, yes, and that it be deferred for further discussion, that the resolution remain as it stands, but that any changes to be brought about will be brought within the next three months if we revisit it then. Fine, I need someone to second that it be deferred. Fine, all those in favor then? Carried, thank you. Item 10.3 sub-C. Be resolved that Municipal Council accept the request for a complete reimbursement of application fees for a zoning bylaw amendment and site plan approval for the amount of $4,790 made by Mrs. Louise or Liz Saumur, Mr. Sylvain Druin, and Mrs. Natalie Druin as long as the implementation plan be signed prior to the fees being reimbursed. Seconded by Councilor Zant. Any questions? Well, the reason that I withdraw it from the usual discussion role is that I made a lot of work, a lot of research with regards to that. And there are a lot of properties within the city of Clarence and Rockland and within the municipality of Rockland that do not conform. But those applying to kennels or those properties along Juannis Road were non-conforming, and they applied to have it conformed or conforming. As we know, this wound up before the courts. It was not finalized. The individual involved had to pay the fees. Now, in this particular case, when the official plan was implemented, Mr. Mayor, everyone had the opportunity to take a look at the official plan. And I'm afraid that we're going to create a precedent by going through this right now. People have an opportunity to really state the following. Hey, I have a piece of, I have property. They have so much time to make people aware as to what they're not content with vis-à-vis the official plan. But the expenditures that we incurred, you know, the publicity and all of this that was involved, but they're non-conforming, they're not legal. And if we had not deemed it non-conforming, not legal, if ever this piece of property wants to be sold off, we can't put it there, you see? You know, our Legal Council would say, you can't have your camping ground there. I'm not against the camping ground in no way, shape, or form am I against it. But the reason that I'm bringing it to your attention is that everyone that's non-conforming may turn around and say, hey, I'm not paying, you know, to have the changes implemented to make it conforming. Take a look at this, Mr. Mayor, because I proceeded to research. And what I was surprised to learn was the following.
...discontinued or changed to another use, you would lose the non-conforming right.
You see, that's why we undertook steps to inform the greater public that there was a camping ground that existed on that property. Those expenditures that we incurred were for that purpose. I'm ready to accept the Town Council's decision, of course, but I just wanted to bring this to your attention. Councilor Levert? Well, I think that we should not compare this to a kennel situation. They were not conforming. They were not even supposed to keep any animals within that barn. They were not conforming, and that's why it was rejected. But if we take a look at the camping grounds, we went through that during the course of the Committee of the Hall meeting. We obtained affidavits from previous mayors. Your brother included, Mr. Le Lande. Yes, I read it clearly. He stated that it was non-conforming. Even though it's not conforming, you can continue to operate, yes, but in that time, at that time, there were no bylaws that did exist within the municipality at that time. That's why they went forward with this then. And the way in which things worked out at that time, clients were expected to be included in a grandfather, in a grand-grandfather's sweep clause, and they'd be immune with regards to this situation. And I thought at that time that the matter had been settled. I understand your concern, however, and it wasn't at that time, it wasn't settled. I thought I'd bring this to your attention, though, Mr. Mayor. Fine, anything else? Yes, I'm in agreement with Mr. Levert. Many individuals came forward. Many individuals might have required that some things be done, but there were some mistakes along the way that were made, and clients here were victim of this misunderstanding. And I don't think we should have them pay for mistakes of the past. And our clerk even obtained affidavits from previous mayors, you know, to this effect. I think we can go on to the vote. Well, this individual might have continued to operate in this particular way even though that person was non-conforming. Yes, but here we are now. All those in favor? Fine then, carried. Let's go on to accounts to be paid. Councilor Le Lande? Be resolved that the salaries paid? Oh, I'm sorry. Accounts to be paid. Be resolved that the accounts to be paid for the period in between the 15th of September to the 14th of October 2018 in the amount of $8,428,628.48 be adopted as recommended. Seconded by Mrs. Sima. Any questions? All those in favor, carried then. Purchase of two rink boards at the Hammond Park and Levionette Park. Whereas the 2018 capital budget for the purchase and installation of the rink boards at Hammond Park and Levionette Park is $60,000. And whereas the bids for the purchase and installation of the ice rink boards are much higher than anticipated due to the substantial increase in metal prices. And be it resolved that the City Council authorize the transfer of $25,000 from the Park Inyeu deferred revenue to the Hammond and Levionette Park rink board purchase and installation budget. And be it resolved that Municipal Council awards the Hammond and Levionette Park rink board purchase and installation contract to PermaFib Incorporated for an amount of $80,623.64. And be it also resolved that Municipal Council adopt a bylaw to authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign the Hammond and Levionette Park rink board purchase and installation contract as recommended. Councilor Zant, go ahead, yes? Yes, yes, I'm in agreement with the resolution, of course, Mr. Mayor, but when we... This was discussed at the Committee of the Hall meeting. I stated that I was in agreement with the transfer of the Inyeu Park to Hammond because Hammond had a more urgent need. But I was in agreement that we were to paint the rink boards that we'd replace. The skating rink is all nice, it's white, but there are two rink boards that have not yet been painted. Well, Mr. Mayor, this work still appears on work to be performed, and it should be done within the coming weeks. Yes. The same evening, an email was sent to individuals concerned that this is to be... This appears on the list of tasks to be performed. Now, the turnaround time, if this is voted upon, it will be quite short. Let me tell you, it's going to be installed this coming winter. If we do say yes tonight, we're not going to wait until 2019, right? Did this be done? No, we were told that this will be done in December of this year. There were seven projects on his waiting-to-be-done list, and it shall be done. Don't forget now your wooden rink boards, if ever that happens. No, we'll do that the week before it is needed, trust me. Fine, all those in favor? Carried then, fine, fine, fine. All right. Exemption to Section 5.5 of Policy RH-HR 2016-11. Councilor Gudimau? Be resolved that an exemption to Section 5.5 of Policy Number RH-HR 2016-11 be granted in order to allow the hiring of Councilor's family member in this particular situation to with Marieve. And be it resolved that Mrs. Levert's salary is established at Level 1, Class 16 of the current part-time employee's salary grid as presented. Seconded by Councilor Le Lande? Questions? All those in favor, carried then, thank you. Can we call back Mr. Levert to the table? Thank you. Mr. Mayor? We've been proceeding to exemptions similar to this for about two or three occasions in the past. Why don't we just modify the bylaw? Well, I believe that if the department might make serious use of it in the future, the tool is still there to circumvent similar situations. But we've circumvented this on two occasions in the past, yes, I know. But we'll discuss this with Town Administration later on and see if we can bring back this item for further discussion, for further consideration. Yes. Item 12.1, Councilor Zant? Signature. Whereas the rental of a grader with one operator for a one-year period is necessary to ensure proper snow clearing in municipal roads in this area and the spreading of gravel. Be it resolved that Town Council adopt a bylaw 2018-141 to authorize the mayor and the clerk to enter into a signed agreement, to enter into a one-year contract with Juste Le Lande Entreprises for the rental of a grader, including one operator, to ensure snow clearing and spreading of gravel as well as the spring maintenance of these said roads for an amount of $186.95 per hour. Any questions? Questions? All those in favor? I was just wondering the following, Mr. Mayor. Did we try to negotiate? Because as I mentioned the last time around when we met, we have a cost difference of 83.3% in between the cost of waiting, the waiting time, basically. And we can't, you know, rely on the cost of gasoline because gas went up considering the past year.
Job offer, right? So it's the only contractor that came forward.
Yes, that's the only contractor that got involved or came forward. He's not the only one around, but the city of Ottawa makes use of many of those operators. If I take a look at the hourly rates, he raised his fees by 12.96%, but the waiting time fees increased by 96%, and the gas prices only increased by some 7% to 10%. Fine, all those in favor then, carried. Item 12.2, modification for the zoning bylaw with regards to 2164 Landry. Well, Mr. Mayor, there's also 12.2 or 12.2... Well, Mr. Mayor, there's also 12.2 or 12.3 to be taken care of before we wrap things up? Do you want me to read what I have before me? Instead of... Because I know that we don't... There might be a mistake in our agenda and the running down of our agenda right now. Let's see if we can pinpoint exactly where the bylaw that we need to dealt with is at. Do you want us to take a five-minute break to ferret out the documents we need to deal with before going on? Yes. Hold on. I know that we have some reference to it, but with regards to the Committee of the Hall meeting item that needs to be entered into, but later on during the evening. Do you have that before you or am I the one? Well, if you are to refresh, you need to refresh it. Councillor Levert, do you have it before you? You have to refresh. You have to proceed to a refresh. Go ahead, councillor Juaniya. Well, whereas the Infrastructure and Land Planning Department recommended a change to part of severed property, part of 2164 Landry Road from Rural Zone 1 to Residential Rural Zone, but has not recommended the reduction of the minimum severance distance. Be resolved that town council adopt a bylaw 2018-147 concerning amendment to the zoning bylaw for the BCR 009 2018, severed part of Landry Road property to RR Zone 6, Exception 6, to meet the requirements of RMS 1 reduction constraints as recommended by the Land Planning Committee. Seconded by Mr. Guimau. Questions? Go ahead. Mr. Mayor, I had occasion to discuss matters with Mrs. Alleran this afternoon on two occasions. I know that this was discussed at the Land Planning Committee and I spoke to Mrs. Bilargé about this also. And I'm in agreement, I'm in agreement, of course, that we need to encourage development and all... And I'm the first one to encourage development in our area. However, however, I don't want to wind up in a situation where the burden whereby Mrs. Alleran alluded to would fall upon their shoulders and members of their family if they ever wanted to expand their farm. And I'm going to have Mrs. Bilargé explain to us what we came up with, a Plan B prospect, if you wish, if I might call it this way. When I dealt with this with Mrs. Alleran at the last minute concerning this, it was difficult to take a decision. And I'm gonna have Mrs. Bilargé explain things and we can continue on along that way, discussing this further. Well, I think that we should be called upon to decide on this matter. If anything else needs to be considered, well, then... Just let's be quiet here just for a minute. What we could have done, Mr. Mayor, is to ask members of the family to come up with their requests at the same time. Yes, but here we are right now. We listened to all discussions that were... To all criteria that was brought or all points brought to the Land Management Committee. But that's a point that Mrs. Alleran brought to my attention this afternoon. I know it's a last-minute thing, but the idea behind it is that the family would make the same request for minor variance to amend zoning provisions to obtain an exemption so that both would be enacted at the same time. That would prevent neighbors right and left to oppose this. And so we wouldn't need to resort to go into requests for objections, you know, if the department has objected itself. We need to hire someone else just in case there's an objection that does surface. So I'm just trying to come up with a solution where everybody comes out a winner. I know that you spoke to the land management people concerning about this, but I think that we're rushed into a... Why don't you just bring in a separate request at the next meeting? Why would we delay one and another individual can come up and make a further request? If we're accepting this one here tonight, I don't know why we wouldn't accept the other one later on. We did the same thing in the Malush Matter, the Trillium Matter also. Well, I don't have any problem with this personally if the lady's family decides to make an application for minor variance. We're aware of the situation. I have no problem applying the same logistics with further requests stemming from this family. At this point in time, we have one resolution before us. If we have to vote upon this resolution right now. So what... So if they come back before council, what would change in the grand scheme of things? Well, we don't know what their timeline is. If they plan to expand, it doesn't necessarily mean that the next council will be before us, too. It could be the council after the next one that might be seized by this situation. Mrs. Bilargé, when a minor variance request is approved, how long is granted to individuals to submit a complete construction plan? Well, with regards to a minor variance, the time period is a bit shorter, but if we have a new zoning bylaw that comes into play, well, minor variance only allows us a certain amount of time after a new one is approved. But if it's an amendment to zoning bylaw that is before us tonight, in this particular case, is it indefinite? If it's approved in a month's time from now and they want to expand in about two years, this will still hold, will it? Yes. We can still come back and say, well, this is what we did in similar situations in such a case, at such a year, and we can still decide. Well, then, you might have another individual that might, in theory, object to this situation because the person that might have purchased this property will have built itself or on that property. Well, we might prevent people from expressing themselves, but we know what the situation is and we won't be working under the constraints of pressure at that point in time. Let's proceed to a vote. Who's in favor of this particular resolution then? Fine. Thank you. All right, then. Let's go on to the confirmatory bylaw. Be it resolved that bylaw 2018-149 be deemed a confirmatory bylaw for the regular meeting of council for November... For this night, 2018? Fine. So confirmatory bylaw at 8:03 PM. Let's take 10 minutes and we'll go back to the Committee of the Hall. Thank you, folks.